Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five Rockingham County Board of Commissioners meeting. I called the meeting to order and I'd ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a number of guests here today. We welcome everybody. So just to give everybody a little frame of reference on how the meeting will work. We'll take attendance, give a number of motions and business to conduct. And at the end, there was a public comment where everyone who's here, I think probably for public comment with respect to Rockingham County signing the jail signing contract with ICE. It's been in the newspaper a lot. So we'll get, everybody will have an opportunity, whether it's about that issue or different issue to have speak in public comment. We just asked that everybody and we'll get hit, everybody, you know, make sure everyone in Zoom land gets to speak as well. We just asked that as we go through that you just identify your name and your, the town you're from, just so you can put it into our notes and record. So with attendance here in the Commissioners Conference Room from the county is myself, my name Kate Foyle and Commissioner Godu. We also have former Lieutenant Warden, who is here, Alison Kivakowski, Shantel Jafonin, Chuck Nicholson, Leila Matilla. And I see from the county in appearing via Zoom is Jude Gates and Superintendent Jason Henry. We'll go, we do have Commissioner Tom Borello is the third Commissioner. He's not here. He's away on vacations. So it's just two of us proceeding today. The first thing we have is openings and awards and we have an opening with respect to painting in the Driscoll of the nursing home. And I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities to planning an IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Sir.
Discussion?
No.
We put this RP out to do some painting and we're just going to wait to see what comes back in terms of what bitters we get. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the consent agenda and first is the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. And I move to approve the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Discussion?
No, they look good.
Thank you, Leila. Your minutes are always really, really well detailed. So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have some adult medical daycare payout report. So we got the month of August in and it looks like we have a budget, an annual budget of a hundred thousand dollars that subsidizes individuals in the community who attend adult medical daycare programs. Right now, we are, as a caucus, we're nearly eleven thousand dollars suspended. So we're under budgets. There's still more opportunity to help individuals within our community. And we do have a adult medical daycare pay request this, this week. So it's nice to see that we will actually help someone else.
For the area. We're here to help the community with their, their needs and adult medical daycare. And just for public record, you know, anyone who wants to start up another adult daycare facility, there is a need in Rockingham County and we would be happy to support them and help them with their tuitions as well.
We have a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire twenty eight A in the Finance Office. And I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty eight eight A and declare twenty one Chronos InTouch nine thousand series time clock surplus with items to be properly disposed of.
Sir.
Discussion? These were old time clocks. We moved to, to a new system. So the, these time clocks don't work with the new system. They're part of the old system. So when we have the equipment that is no longer in use, statutorily, we declare it surplus and disposal. Anything else?
Nope.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the September twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five payroll approval. And I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, six hundred and thirty one thousand, three hundred and eighty two dollars and fifteen cents for the period ending September twentieth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
Discussion?
Looks like we're back to the
Yeah.
normal area of what our expenses there. So.
We like to see consistency across the paid periods attracted to the payroll process post smoothly this week. Okay.
Exactly.
I got it done.
There are different, different factors. So.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Commissioners updates. You have anything to share?
No, nothing special this week.
Well, we obviously have a
We have plenty to discuss.
Yeah. And we appreciate everybody coming to public comment, whether you're remote or in person. We are, you know, this is what our role is to be representatives of our community. So we appreciate people coming. Next, we have an exception request for wage increases for the Finance Office. And I move to approve two exception requests to Personnel Policy seven dash four wage increases for Finance Office employees LL and AT as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Discussion?
This is our typical routine of when we missing a, a, an employee, two other employees need to take up the slack and they'll be working overtime and they'll be working hard. So they get a little extra stipend every week until we fill the position.
We try to compensate with some small stipends when individuals kick on roles outside of their normal.
So, right.
And it's a common practice here. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have long-term care services. We have an adult medical daycare request for Easter Seals. And I move to approve an adult medical daycare request dated September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five to Easter Seals for an additional client, WJM at an amount of eighty dollars per day, two days per week, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Sir.
Discussion?
I always read these requests. I feel like our money is going in the right place. It's going to some, a woman that is in need, doesn't have a lot of money and they need the adult daycare service and we're able to help them. That's what we're getting.
Both for care, I think it's helpful for both the family and for the care and socialization of this individual, which again, we were part of a pilot program that was a state pilot program to delay institutional care, nursing home care. And we did that through some of the things through these adult medical daycare programming, which allows, you know, the, an individual to go to a facility for the day and there's programming and activities and it gives caretakers a little bit of respite during the day, but also stimulation and socialization for the individual who are seeking care. So these programs have proven to be really helpful. We have a, through the pilot program had a lot of success. And so we're happy to continue to support these endeavors.
The goal is to keep people at home.
Right.
As long as they possibly can before they need to assist the living, which is our next, the next steps they offer.
So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the Ernest P. Barker Healthcare License Update Application. And I move to approve the Ernest P. Barker Assisted Living Updated License Application and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services and Executive Director Assisted Living.
Second.
Discussion?
This looks pretty mundane. Just reapplying to what we already do.
Also, we have a new person in the role as executive.
I recognize the name.
Yeah. We have to update, it's just pro forma to update our documentation because we have a new executive director. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a line item transfer. And I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of seven thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars dated September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five, transferring from non expendable equipment to expendable equipment in office supplies as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Sir.
Discussion? Well, I mean, usually, I know exactly. Usually you like, we, we're in September and we're doing line item transfers that would normally raise a red flag because we're like, why are we doing, this is not good budgeting. But it's actually great news because it means that the items were less expensive than we anticipated. And so the move from, from not expendable to expendable is because that it's under that five thousand dollar mark. So we're just moving it into the right bucket based on the price of things. But it's really a good news because it means the items came in less than we anticipated. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move right into department head updates and Chuck, why don't you lead us off today?
Well, part of the usual thing as far as saying audits, financial statement audits continue. Medicare cost report will have a little bit of a change on fixed assets. So we're just working that out. And then both the US Chair and Shantel can sign the report. And it'll go off to DHHS. So that's, we still plan on sending someone, an individual out to the Brown Building at DHHS to make sure it is truly delivered to the state. So again, just generally very busy. There's an interesting payroll. We did have our new accounting analyst start this week. So that's very good news for us. So he's kind of acclimated to our financial ERP system and how we do things in finance. We're very happy to have ever on the board with us. And I do have a walk and I'm sorry, but we did, if you recall, we were going to do the TD Equipment capital lease for the purchase of the long-term care van. And I'm not sure if TD forgot that they hadn't sent me the lease documents. But the, the ten was to close for nine thirty. So we, we did get those in this morning. So and I did print them out.
So we can add that in. And just for everyone in the room, Chuck Nicholson is our Senior Director of Finance. Well, thank you, Chuck. Do you have anything?
No, I will stop.
Shantel, our nursing home administrator. Hello.
Our census in the nursing home is one hundred and thirty-three and we are at forty-six in the assisted living today. I'm happy to report in regards to the outbreak, the staff have done an amazing job containing it to the one unit. So it didn't spread. Our last few rounds have been negative. So we are at zero staff in one resident. We have testing again today and as long as this round is negative as well, we will clear outbreak next week. So inverse frost, but truly kudos to the team for that. Some general updates, working on our skills fair. The job fair yesterday, although a little bit of a bumpy start, unfortunately, there was a tragic accident on the highway that impacted it. For long-term care, it was a great turnout. It was great to kind of see. We had five people for environmental services. We're looking to afford on a handful of LMEs and MMEs for the nursing home, some for the assisted living and life enrichment. So every department I had representative, at least for my department, brought in, I think with interviews. But there was a lot of turnout and a lot of conversations. So it was really nice to see that. And then the pie contest is live. So at the switchboard and in corrections, we are raising money donations for the Alzheimer's Walk on behalf of Rockingham. There are over thirty people, including every commissioner at the table. And loads many of us that you can donate and the top three individuals that the most money was raised against our, some of our residents will actually get a pie unless that person buys their way out by matching the amount. So that has gone live and we are spreading the word. So.
If you're on your way out the door and you want to put some money towards buying one of the commissioners.
But it'll, it'll be a fun, a fun way to raise money for good causes. So. That's it.
Thank you. Alison Kivakowski, our Senior Director of Human Resources.
I'm going to jump you off of the job fair. I just want to thank everybody that attended it. It was well done, a lot of positive. Most of the feedback that we got was from social media. That's how they came through Facebook. Out of a hundred and forty-three total recipients, we actually had ninety-four and eight of those will walk in just from word of mouth and that. So that was good. We had seven for nursing, four for assisted living, three for life enrichment, four for environmental services, two for corrections, four for finance, eight for facilities, and yes, IT took it over with twelve. But many of the applicants enjoyed meeting the different departments because some of them weren't sure where they wanted to go in their career. They might've been making their career path change. But we had some younger folks that came in that were coming, maybe not going to college and were looking for a career path that they could go into. So I wanted to say it was really well done and everybody that was at the tables were really helpful and lively and really engaged with the folks that came. We have our years of service event that will be conducted at Sveno's on Wednesday, October twenty second. I'll be reaching out to a couple of the department directors, division directors, because we have a few missing RSVPs. We want to make sure we account for everyone. And we are going to have our annual scarecrow contest. Everybody knows which department will be doing scarecrow. It will be put in front of the assisted living and around circle up there. Everyone needs to drop off their wonderful items by October third, which is next Friday. No pressure there. And I just want to speak to the New Hampshire Association fifty anniversary conference. We currently have well over two hundred and fifteen, twenty-five recipients that will be attending that. And we're registering, the registration is still ongoing. Most of the, I think we're missing just two educational sessions that don't have outlines. But it will be a pretty comprehensive event for all counties in New Hampshire that will be attending. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. I think it's great. I mean, we've all worked really hard and as a collective group to recruit and retain employees. Know that pretty much everybody here knows how challenging it is for hiring these days. And we've really, we posted this job there yesterday, which has been free. We have seen a real uptick in employees and it's particularly, that effort has been particularly strong in with the nursing home. So we can offer continuity of care for residents.
Alison, do you have plans for another job fair, maybe in?
We're going to, we're going to be doing a debrief and with the group and just talking, Shantel, myself, Harry and Autumn to talk about plans, you know, just the enhancements, ideas, more things coming. And yeah, it was well done. While we have a hundred and forty-three that applied on Indeed, that was the platform. Sometimes people will apply because of requirements who are unimportant. And so we factor, we factor that percentage out.
Right.
But overall, having forty-four, we probably surpassed a lot of other companies in the past year of having that many people at a job fair. So it was well done. And I think everybody that came was very interested in the county and trying to, we've already done seven offers this morning that have gone out with additional five or six more. We're just waiting for the division directors to get back to us. So that performance, yeah. So they're already. So it's great. It's a good thing.
And if I can just say too, one of the things HR did a beautiful job, Julie. One of the things that HR set up that was so wonderful because of the atrium kind of interview space is they had the computers right there and were being able to help, which is sometimes the hard part, getting through the computers. So people left with applications validated and that was wonderful. So.
Well, thank you for the collaborative effort from everybody. All right, we're going to head to Zoom land. Jude, Jude Gates, our Senior Director of Facilities and Operations.
Good morning. I would echo the fact that the job fair was remarkably successful. We have a, a difficult time bringing in tradespeople as well. We got at least a couple of really viable applicants, I would say. And we also had some folks that looked at facilities and knew that it wasn't necessarily for them and were able to direct themselves over to Environmental Services. So it was really effective altogether and it was very well done. I know there was a lot of work went into it behind the scenes, but we were very happy to reap the benefits of that. Other than that, the new building is progressing. There's little teeny tiny details every single day, but it's coming right along. We don't have final pricing on the antenna system that we need for the fire department yet. We're hoping to have that by the end of this week. And as of yesterday, they were still expecting it by the end of this week. We are replacing the flooring up on Driscoll Two. So they've got all of the flooring, the hallway, the day rooms, the residence rooms, the bathrooms. They've taken all of the flooring up. They're going to start putting down new flooring shortly. So hopefully in the next week or so, we'll be ready for that. For the next phase, we'll be replacing the toilets, the, the handrails, getting ready for the painting. The unit's going to be really beautiful when we're finished with it. And other than that, all's well. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Jude. It's like the, close to the finish line. There's like the, the punch list is always growing.
Jude, I, I did get a question. When can departments begin to bring over ancillary stuff from their desks and, and, and things? Do you have? It, it, can they do that now or?
No.
What? No.
We do not have a certificate of occupancy. So I know people are chomping at the bit to go through there, but it's, it's not yet appropriate. We've got, we had to lock the building down. We've had a couple of folks looking for one of the buildings that got inside the building and we're sort of wandering around. So the building is locked. We don't have a C of O and until we do, we really can't be moving our own stuff into the building. We're still working on the final touches for all of the different insurance pieces. There's a difference between occupied and otherwise and, and so on. So as soon as it's available, we'll let folks know, but I still think we're looking at close to the end of October.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Jude. It seems like at the end of the week, we'll have a good sense of the antenna, which will give, give a lot of
Yes.
will drive the CO process.
Yes. And I'll have a time capsule for you next week. So you can start filling it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Jason Henry, the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Morning, everybody. Sorry I'm not there today. I let Commissioner call. I know I had a procedure, so we could not be in a room this morning. Some positive things. So Prime Care, their New York Regional Team is actually here doing a tour of our Medicaid assisted treatment program. This is great times. People are in here. Rockingham County was the second in the country to start their own OTP, opioid treatment program where we can actually do our own methadone inside the jail. I have a ninety day in-house treatment program. So we're kind of a model for different places around the country. So they're here touring that and seeing how they can implement in other places. So that's kind of exciting for us. We have a hundred and seventy-four inside today. Yesterday, the, the, we thank HR and everybody else that put together the recruiting yesterday. We sent a couple over. Dave Constantino, those that know him, tried to pull people he could, but it went very well. So we appreciate that. But at the same time, yesterday morning, we also had nine promotions, which we invited families to show up. And we had quite a few families show up to see these individuals get promoted to corporal, sergeant and lieutenant. So that was a really fun morning yesterday. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Kathy, Stacy are registered deeds.
Good morning. We're having a great week, a great month revenue wise. Activity's been pretty consistent, which is, which is a wonderful thing. Other than that, I will just say that the Legislative Committee has started working for NHAC and there are a lot of bills affecting long-term care. So we're starting to identify the bills as quite a few, but we're nowhere near the end. And obviously we will keep everybody informed and that's pretty much it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we have anyone else from, from Zoom? I don't see anyone else. Okay, Leila, Matilla, the or Commissioner Godu.
I have nothing for public.
Thank you. All right. And we'll move on then. Now that department head updates are finished, we'll move on to new business, old business. And we have a number of new business items. First, we have a walk-in request for a wage increase. And I move to approve an exception request for Personnel Policy seven dash four wage increase for Department of Corrections employee JW.
Sir.
Discussion?
Sure, I'll start off with discussion. It, it would appear that, to me, that there was that it didn't, that this request didn't fit into the normal guidelines. And frankly, what I get out of the whole thing is that there was eight hundred hours that we were paying out. I, I would like to initiate a review of our policy of how many hours that employees are able to bank. I know there was some restriction on, on vacation time, but this, this earned time, I think it might be getting a little out of control. And I, I'd like to put a limit on that. But on the amount of hours, because this is a retirement and, and we have and we have to pay the hours out in cash that were earned at, you know, but they were, of course, they were earned at a much lower rate. We're paying out at the highest rate at the end. And I don't think we need to limit our liability.
I think it's a little different. The issue is a little different. And I think it's
I just, I do want to go back. The policy does allow for somebody that was hired prior to two thousand and seven to cap it eight hundred hours. There is a change that happened in our policies and anybody that's hired after January first, twenty oh five, they are only allowed to cap at four, four hundred and eighty hours. So that will be six weeks. So the board, previous boards had made some transitional changes to that, but there was kind of like that stopgap with some people that had been way prior that had these hours. So they made that decision back then. I did go through all of our policies on that. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay, right.
Chuck, did you want to think?
No, it was giving, I mean, once upon a time way back when there was no cap and then there was like a compulsory conversion of hours over eight hundred that went to what, sick pool? And then there was also, I'm sure, from Lieutenant Warden, was that hard? And then there was also then, there's a conversion also for portion that was over the eight hundred two excess earned time as well. So.
So already down to four hundred hours. That's already been.
Anybody that hired after two thousand and five.
So.
But, excuse me, adds up to seven thirty-fourth of two thousand and seven. This was a situation.
A little after the old ones.
Yeah.
You're one of, one of two.
So I guess my, I guess my question is sort of, there was some representation in this because this has to do with four and the and that did you make your, based on the representations made to you, did you make your decision about your finish date based on those representations?
Yes. The retirement board says that anytime after the fifteenth, consider it a full month before retiring. But so I went to the end of the month, originally going to retire on a Friday and there you'd be done. Like they say, no, if you work till Monday, you're in the next pay period, we'll subvert it by. So I had to work one more day too.
Would you come and tell him?
Had I been given different information, I of course would have worked one more day for different circumstances at that point. Thirty years in a day here.
Right.
Thirty years ago.
That's kind of what I had outlined in my synopsis to the board. So I guess my my position on it is that there was detrimental reliance on the information that was provided. And as such, that we should I, I am of the position that we should honor the exception request because one, I don't think it's setting any significant precedent, given the nature of the timing and the age, you know, the timing and that stopgap for that period of of, like, these prior to two thousand and five and two, because there was death on that cover of mine, have an obligation. So I'm going to support paying the two, honoring the exception request.
Yeah. And my angle on this is it, it feels like we're, that we're trying to game the system. And all of a sudden, you know, all the hours get paid out at a higher rate because of a couple of days different. And I, and I, I understand that that you made a phone call and did not get totally accurate information, but our HR Director and the Finance Director have both suggested that if your request did not comply, you know, to, to make a change. I'm going to climb the table this until Tom comes back. So we can get his opinion on this because I'm not in favor of this at the moment. At the moment, and it might be better to have three of us. I don't know. I have no idea what Tom. Bishop Tom Morello have to say about it.
I think it makes sense then to table this for a week.
Okay, so motion to table.
Second, on the motion to table Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Exception request is tabled. Next, we have the Department of Corrections blocking inmate administrative transfer pursuant to Hampshire RSA 30 dash B 21, following 21. And I move to approve inmate administrative transfer pursuant to Hampshire RSA 30 dash B 21, dated September 24th, 2025. Transferring one inmate to Carroll County as recommended by the superintendent, the department. So. Discussion. This is administrative function that we do with the, when. Due to various needs, sometimes we transfer inmates to another county facility and likewise they can transfer. Inmates to Rockingham, depending on the needs of the facility. In this instance, we're transferring an individual to Carroll County and statutory authority, and there's a statutory process for which requires us to approve that. That's all we're doing.
Yeah, that's easy.
On the motion, Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I want more.
Oh, sure.
New business.
Yeah, do, well, do we want to take on the? We have the motion with respect to the lease agreement. Do you want to do yours and then we can move back? I have one too.
Yeah, I can do mine. I'm more of a discussion than initiating. I I've I've been made aware that there are basically two departments. That are buying all of the paper supplies for the county. And the other departments are taking from the two departments that are that are buying. So now that we have a new facility, new building coming online. Everybody's expect, each department is expected to to pay for the supplies that would be on their floor. If you will, and none of them have budgeted for it because it is just hasn't, has not been the habit. So I I think that we need to just make a decision on how this should move forward. I mean, our department has not budgeted, some of the department has not budgeted. And they just increased Chantel's budget, you know, with the long term care. She they keeps getting orders for stuff to to go over to deeds and to return, you know, county attorney. And it was small before, it might be bigger now. And so I. My my suggestion is that everybody continue to get paper supplies the way they've been getting and then and we as commissioners need to be aware that. Those budgets might go older, we need to make a transfer. To add to that budget, but I I it needs to kind of come out in the open of how we're going to handle it. And however, I don't care how, but.
Right. I mean, I think. One thing is, we did have this discussion back in at budgeting season. About how these, the departments were going to need to budget for these types of things.
It appears that they're.
Correct. So now we're like, we're. We're sort of batting cleanup.
Right.
Because we have to clean up in terms of how these are going to be supplied. My question is, because department heads have the, they have like a $5,000 buffer where you can just.
True.
Move within the line. Is there any reason why we can't? I mean. I don't anticipate, given the duration, we're talking like six months of supplies that each department doesn't start. Taking from, you know, if they need to go over that 5,000 mark, that is a separate issue, but like $5,000 of toilet paper. Over six months seems unlikely.
Right.
And so that that way, each department. Will be responsible of keeping track of their usage. And that way we actually collect data and then at the, and they'll be able to properly budget for the next fiscal year. I think there's enough room within the budget. It makes more sense for each department to take it on. If they're, they have budget shortfalls in some way. I mean, we've seen this in other ways where. You know, when we had unexpected overages a few years ago in long term care, we saw other department heads rally around long term care and do transfers at the end of the year to make sure they were compensated. There's no reason to believe if, you know, the county attorney's office and the registry of deeds. Ends up having.
They're short.
They're short that long-term care couldn't help with by providing, you know, transferring some money in that direction. So I think it makes sense. For them to get into the game of keeping track and using and figuring out what their budget needs are, because that will put them in the best position. Frankly, I don't anticipate that either department is going to be over $5,000 in.
Can't imagine.
Toilet paper, but and paper towels, but. You know.
They're not used to buying it. So it's like, well, where's my line item? And they don't have it. So but yes, we'll force them into doing it. That way they have data to budget properly for now.
Correct. So I think what we should do, my suggestion is that they can take it from the office supplies line, right?
Yep.
As a starting point, and then going forward, that way they can account for it. And then if there's a need, we'll we'll make movement where we need to make movement.
And do we have an overall agreement with the supplier so that we get this, each department gets the same rate? Because some departments are going to get a small. Amount of materials and soap and everything, and other departments will have bigger. Jude, enlighten us.
Hi. We, Daima Tomskar, purchasing coordinator, does put these products out to RFP. She's held off a little bit. In part because the prices had really spiraled a bit ago. And also because of all the address changes that she thought might be a little too challenging for the vendors. She does all of the custodial supplies and the paper goods at the same time. So photocopy paper, toilet paper, paper towels, plastic bags. All of that stuff, the little bitty medicine cups they use in the nursing home, all of that goes out to RFP at the same time. And the expectation is, our plan is to have it for the contract you're starting on November 1st. So that by then, everyone will be established, the deliveries can be made here. And it will be easier all around than trying to change partway through.
They'll just be able to order from the same vendor, whatever, I only need one case.
Exactly.
That, right.
And if it's effective November 1st, that's like perfect.
Right. It it's like we do now. We go out for like the water. And then when Kathy needs water for her department, she calls WB Mason and gets her water. Or the photocopy paper from WB Mason or whomever. So that is how we work it now. Yes.
So do you think?
I I like that idea.
Okay.
Yes.
So I want you to rea. I want you to realize something different for me is I'm going to be, I'm going to be supplying for public restrooms, not just for staff. The other thing you need to realize is we do cleaning supplies too, and all in the in the the. The bags for all the garbage cans and things like that. It isn't just toilet paper and hand towels. It's a lot of other stuff too. I just want you to be aware of that. That we have not obviously had to do before. So that, you know, just so that you know, I I didn't realize, I know Pat brought it to or questioned Jude on it. And sent me a copy of it. But yeah, I mean, it's more than just, you know, paper products. So thank you.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and there could be some significant numbers in their budget. So we'll just accommodate that.
Correct. If we have to make a transfer down the road because of it, then we'll figure out a way to do that. But at least this is getting on a path to accounting for it. Being able to, we'll put you in a better place to budget. And if we exceed 5,000, we'll take it on.
Right.
And we have the, if the contract's starting November 1st. You know, it's easy for you to, you know, know what you're working with.
Great.
Great. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Welcome. Okay, the other thing, we have those, did you have anything else?
No.
I have two things. One, obviously, business purchase agreement, so I'll make the motion with respect to that. I move to approve a three-year capital lease with TV equipment finance integrated with payments totaling $88,957.44 commencing September 30th, 2025. And authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents.
Sir.
Any discussion?
No.
We already had the discussion. I'm the motion Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
The other thing I.
Want to sign that?
I think I have to sign it, but I'll see.
Like all American flags.
Fancy.
Fly, fly.
And so I, obviously, we're about to, after new business, we go into public comment. And I'm sure everyone's like. Have things to share. So we welcome that. But what I would ask is that prior to, because I think predominantly people are here with respect to the county's. Contract with ICE to house detainees at the jail. I would ask that we take a, we make a decision to be prior to that. Contract coming before or taking a vote that we have a public hearing to allow for a larger forum for people to come and speak. So.
I I'm certainly in favor of a public hearing. It could be done on this. I'm I'm involved in other boards and we, we have final budget votes, which is the other board I'm involved in in Salem. We have a public hearing. Everybody comes in and says what they got to say. And then at the conclusion of the public hearing is when we have a a vote, you know, our internal discussion and vote. So I, yeah, let's, when we pick the date, we'll we'll advertise a public hearing, give everybody an opportunity to express themselves again.
And I guess then I'll make, that's great. So I will make the motion to. To schedule a special meeting, commissioners meeting with a public hearing and vote to thereafter. Shall we be moving to contact with ICE before the Board of Commissioners?
I'll second that.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Thank you, Misses.
Yes. Next, we'll move right into public comment. And so I'm I'm going to, we're going to try to get, we want everybody who wants to speak to be able to speak. I think what probably makes the most sense is to go around the room here first. And then if I miss anyone, it's only I'm going to do a 360 to try to get to everyone. So. Yeah, okay.
I would just like to know some of the details of the care bones.
Your name first. Okay, so let me, yeah, repeat that. So public hearing, how sort of public hearing works? We would ask that everybody, it's not going to be so much a dialogue, because public hearing is more where you get to speak whatever you want. Everybody is typically, there's not a hard limit, but we try to ask that you limit to five minutes. Beyond that, we'd ask that you state your name and just say what town you're from, so we can get it for our minutes. But but otherwise, it won't be, this isn't really the time for interactive approach. We could set up a forum where the public hearing have more time to have some discussion, but. For now, in here now, it's just. That, is there anything else? Okay, would you, so.
My name is Peg Aronian.
Okay.
Don't pass it over. To me. I am curious to know the details of this proposed agreement, which we probably aren't going to drop today. But, and I would just like to register that I am intimately opposed to it. For a lot of reasons, which I'm sure people will know. Bad too.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Kathleen Slover. I'm from Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I'm talking on behalf of myself, but I just want to give my perspective as somebody who has done work with Moms Demand Action, which is a gun violence prevention. Group here in New Hampshire. We have a outreach safety program. Surrounding gun violence prevention and part of that program is relying on trust and good relationships with our local law enforcement. We have, we spread the message of if there's a person in crisis, or if you're in a situation where a firearm is present and you feel unsafe or uncomfortable. Call your local law enforcement. And that is some message that we spread to our members and our community through tabling events, through partnering with law enforcement, through National Life Out. And safety meetings and and programs. It only works if the community trusts. Their law enforcement. With 143 firearm deaths in New Hampshire and only four illegal crossings in the northern border, it's mind boggling to me that cracking down. On illegal immigration is a community safety measure. The. ICE with their covered faces and guns already drawn and their gotcha tactics. Erode trust in our local law enforcement, and that is what makes us unsafe. Going after immigration offenders that may may or may not be criminals erodes law enforcement's legitimacy. And that. Makes our work saying, hey, everybody, call your local law enforcement when there's a problem. That if they don't have legitimacy, then people won't trust them. Even if Rockingham Jail assures good conditions. For detainees, detainees are being pulled from their communities. Again, eroding trust and legitimacy in our law enforcement. I have a friend who's an immigration lawyer, and she said she lost contact for a while with her. With her client because he got moved to Texas. So I can't imagine. That Rockingham Jail won't be used the same way. So let's not make Rockingham County Jail part of this cycle that is eroding trust and legitimacy. This does not serve our community. And as someone who has worked eight to nine years in the community across New Hampshire. It is so important that we trust law enforcement and that erosion of trust and that erosion of legitimacy does not make our community community safer. Thank you.
I'm going to go around this way. So I just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any. Oh, yeah, Klein Dickens, Northampton. I don't have anything specific prepared. So this is sort of improvised. I want to push back on what Jason Henry, Jason Henry said about the jail. I just want to remind everyone what jails are. So so in this country, we have a system called cash bail. There's been various reform efforts and pushback on reform efforts and all these things. But in the entire world, there are only two countries that do cash bail. It's here and it's, I think, the Philippines. Only two places in the entire world that have a system in which. When somebody accuses you of a crime and arrests you. And you were too poor to pay it, they can hold you in a cage. They can legally sexually assault you through strip searches. They can deprive you of food. They can deprive you of connection with other human beings. And. That's not an appropriate place for a drug treatment program. A place with cages, a place where people are forced to work and are not paid adequately. It's estimated that in New Hampshire, the maximum pay for someone held in a county jail is a dollar fifty an hour. With the lowest being 25 cents an hour. And these are people who can't consent. To either the sexual contact that has been documented between workers. At this jail specifically and inmates who can't consent. To working without pay, who aren't allowed to unionize. And so so in inviting ICE to use this jail, we are saying. Let's, let's take the minimal oversight that we have as a county. And let's just throw it away. Let's just throw it away. ICE has an Office of Civil Rights Enforcement. Which is no longer in operation and all their records have been basically purged from the open internet. And they found in Stratford County, which I assume that Commissioners Godu and Tom Morello are modeling. Or you're envisioning something similar to what's happening in Stratford County. With ICE using about 100 of the beds here. In Stratford County, there was massive, massive human rights abuses. There was a man who tried to kill himself and in response. This was an immigrant detainee. He tried to kill himself because the conditions were so poor. And in response, they tased him, pepper sprayed him, and beat him and put him in solitary. I will remind all of you. That New Hampshire has one of the highest rates of solitary confinement in the nation. And that it is torture under UN human rights law. Jails are not okay. Human cages are not okay, but especially they're not okay for people who are innocent. Who have not committed crimes. And even if they have committed crimes, the reason they are here are not for those crimes. They're for status violations. They're for. Crossing the Darien Gap, being held in a concentration camp at the border, and then finally making it. Seeking asylum, maybe even getting a hearing for asylum, maybe even a temporary temporary order. Preventing their removal. And we are saying, you know what? We want to keep you in a cage. We want your cavities to be searched by strangers. We want you to eat moldy food. And we want. And we want all of your loved ones to not know where you are. I strongly oppose the memorandum of understanding.
Linda Haskins, State Rep, Rockingham Eleven, Exeter. I am going to follow these two unbelievably talented eloquent speakers, but I will do my best. This is not a partisan issue. This vote should not be two to one along party lines. I am the proud daughter of a county, a lifelong county sheriff. I visited the female jail with my dad when I was a girl. Jails are not perfect, but what is happening in our communities when people are kidnapped off the streets. Which happened in my own town of Exeter. Is unacceptable and that we would participate in it. In this county is an outrage. This room is full because the people who are your constituents do not want it. They're not from Stratford County. They're from Rockingham County. And they vehemently oppose this. And I dearly hope. That all the commissioners will respect who whom you serve. And vote against it and not vote along party lines because this should never be a partisan vote. I thank you.
Yeah, yes, um Hannah Sorrow, I am from Portsmouth. Um, so I found out about this through the Seacoast online article. Um, and you know, it's, it's my understanding that the jail is currently half full. Um, I believe there's a hundred and fifty open beds right now. And I, I, I struggled to see uh why that's a problem that needs to be solved. Um, I know, I think, I really think that um having an empty jail or, you know, a half-full jail is for the best. Um, uh, Commissioner, I, I'm sorry, it's God, Godo?
Godu.
Godu. Um, I believe you're quoted in that article as saying that, you know, there, this contract would bring in. About six million dollars net in revenue. Um. But I can't really justify selling our morality for for something like this. Because, you know, you also said that that providing or agreeing to this contract would be doing our country a great service. And I, I really, I don't know what kind of service you're talking about. Cause what you're talking about is participating in terrorizing the most vulnerable among us. Um, and you know, the, the Trump administration tells us time and time again. That the people that are being abducted by ICE are the worst kinds of criminals. Uh, but I, I don't know how they can possibly know that when the people that they're adopting are consistently denied their human rights. Um, so, you know, I. But I, but essentially what I wanna say is I, if this contract is presented. I want you to practice empathy because what's really important is I want you to put that, put yourself in their shoes. And ask yourself what it would be like to be, you know, torn from your home, torn from your family. You, you're your family and and wonder if you're ever going to see them again. Um, in, I, I'm just essentially here to say, you know. Please use that empathy. Every, I know everyone has empathy in them. I'm asking you to, to search for that within yourself. And and say no to that contract should it be presented. But thank you.
I'm Brenda Burcall from Newmarket. And I strongly oppose the idea of using these beds. Due process is not being followed. It is part of the Constitution, the document that should be governing our country. Uh, HBS corpus is not being followed. These are kidnappings by masked unidentified people. Most, the majority of people pulled in are not actual criminals. They may have paperwork violations. It's inexcusable to me. Who knows what will happen in the future? There could be a reckoning someday and maybe people could be held accountable for things done now. That are immoral. That's all.
Thank you. I think it's morally wrong and saying that it's okay to earn money, something is morally wrong. Is not made of money. And in addition, I'm hoping that our area of New Hampshire has um. Wise leaders and one of the things that may happen is. Make a quick decision and have a lot of unintended consequences. Like the extra personnel costs, lawsuits because it's unconstitutional. Okay, so I agree.
Hi, I am Slottard Exeter. Um, like most of us here, uh. Using budgetary money from ICE to balance our needs um is just unconscionable. We're talking human beings, we're talking a jail versus folks who need to have their rights protected. And need, and their families need to know where they are. And I trust. Sometimes I feel crazy that I say this. I trust that you folks will be able to have. The more open hearing for more folks who want to speak and that you will also move and make a decision with your heart. For the people here in this county and as an example for the rest of the state and the country. We have a chance to lead.
Hi, I'm Katie and I live in Exeter. Um, I will say this is very new to me. Um, I'm not one to go to protests and public hearings. Um, but this is. Yes, um, the reason I am here is because this feels really, really strong in my heart that this is not okay. That we already, what ICE is doing feels so wrong. The fact that we're willing to open up our own jail in Rockingham County where we live feels tremendously even more wrong. I am a teacher. I work with kiddos full of diverse backgrounds. I have a diverse family. I have two little kids of my own. And I know there are tons and tons of other moms and dads. And people in our county who would be here if they were able or if they knew about it. And they knew that this is a space where they could come up in voice. So I'm speaking not only for myself, but for. A ton, a ton of parents that I know and feel the same way. Um, and I just want to echo what everyone else has said. I wish I came with more well-spoken words. But I just very, very much oppose using the Rockingham County Jail for ICE. There needs to be a better way. ICE in general. Using the jail, there's a better way. If these families, and I speak to everyone over there too, if there are families. If there are people who did wrong, they should be arrested if there is a serious crime that has been done. With a warrant, with a police officer, with a name in a proper way. Rather than being torn from their families. And so I think I echo that I put myself. Which I do often and it's so hard and it's why I'm here and say, if my husband, if I got pulled from our family. It's just, it's incomprehensible. And so to think that. People in this room feel that is okay because it might make a little bit of money for Rockingham County is not okay. So we need to put money aside. We can find money somewhere else. Like you said, you don't need to tell a jail. With people, we can. You can be okay and find money elsewhere. I know that's hard, but I'm sure that there's other ways about it. Please, I beg you not to use Rockingham County Jail for this purpose. Thank you.
Um, there's a number of people back there. Oh, I'm fine. You can, you still, I can speak.
Hi, I'm Sally Joining from uh Lee. And I really oppose uh any facility for ICE use. Um, the Stratton Shining House is probably twenty-five people right now. And the statistics are that seventy percent of house uh detained immigrants have zero. Zero crime. And uh JR B uh kind of on a fast track without due process. None of them are just getting in the night, getting on the airplanes and being deported with no due process. And I would also say, uh, if I were a resident of Rockingham County and thought that. This new road or that blue swimming building over there was built with money. That we got um a chair that houses detainees. I would be so ashamed to say to myself. And I really hope you bring this up to your constituents because it's very important when we think. Oh, well, really, in this time, we are at the place where we need to do the right thing. Whether we're in our comfort zone or not, it's time to make a stand.
My name is Sarah, I'm also from New Hampshire and I wasn't to speak, but I wanna say I'm afraid. I mean, in my core, I am afraid because I am woke. I am woman. I am liberal. And in five years, it could be me that you're trying to put into that facility. And I am afraid.
My name is Valerie Fagan and I've lived in the Rockingham County for over forty years. And everything that I love about this state about live free or die, um, I would like us to uphold those values. And really think about who we are in this moment in time, what do we stand for? And equality and treating people justly and fairly. I really hope that we can do that. And oppose the Rockingham County jail to on detain um.
Uh, morning, I was John Carty, I live in uh in Seabrook. Um, I'm a twenty-three-year resident of Rockingham County, first in Portsmouth, I live in Seabrook. I'm also the son of two immigrants. And they're moving to the country and they both, we're my sisters and sisters.
Cheek up, John.
Yeah, sure. Uh, John Carty, enforcement. But so, lived enforcement, now living in Seabrook. So I've been in the county for twenty-three years. Um, I love this state. I love this county. I'm opposed to this action also. And I would ask the commissioners uh to consider a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to thank the commissioners and all of the department heads for what you do. You don't all wear uniforms, it's your own service. So thank you for being here, what you do when we're here and when we're not. So here's what I ask you to consider. There's a couple of things. Is, I am focused. Is there? First thing is, is this good business, a good activity for the state of New Hampshire to be engaging with federal government? And the second thing I ask you to consider is what's actually behind it. So let me start with the easy one first. We are Rockingham County. We are the state of New Hampshire. I'm gonna stretch the definitions a little bit and say we are separate from and equal to the federal government, you know, the states. So there are good businesses that can be had between federal government and a state. My first home enforcement is home to the oldest and the shith drippin' country. That works fine. Kittery and Portson both benefit from that federal process. This one, not so much. And one of the reasons I say that is, we've seen, no, there's no question of the thing. We've seen a number of these arrests reversed in court. We've seen a number of deportations reversed in court. This policy, which is coming from the federal government, let's clarify where it's coming from, is in fact not winning in court most of the time. I see no reason to think it's other calling to. So my question to Rockingham County is, is it good business to engage with the federal government? On any activity which is on to be polite, questionable legal grounds? I would submit no. I understand that revenue is revenue. I also agree with fire speakers that if we need the revenue, we'll find it. We do not need it from the federal government, certainly not from us. So that's point number one. Point number two, this particular program, I can't say this better than my predecessors have. But this has gotta be one of the worst federal programs I've seen in my lifetime. It's amoral. It is, in my opinion, don't even play a wire on TV. It's constantly being found to be illegal. It, it's, and, and again, I, I am the devil and the hurt son. I'm a member of an immigrant community. I am connected to a number of immigrant communities. And the ideas and the prospects by which the White House claims this is necessary are nonsense. Use a different word. So, that, that raises the question again, is this something that, that state of New Hampshire and the county of Rockingham should be involved in? Absolutely no. There's no good reason for us to help the federal government, the White House. Carry out these actions. Not. We'll find the revenue if we need it and we appreciate you looking for it, but this is blood money. We do not need federal money. So I ask you, please vote against this.
Uh, I'm from Dover. Um, I will try and keep this short. Um, so, I'm watching, I'm sorry. Um, if you cannot find the strength and empathy that is needed in this moment. Um, then think about yourself. Think about the consequences of these actions and of these decisions. Because one day, Trump will be gone and we will be done with ICE. We will be done with all of this. And your choices will still be recorded and we will remember. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Corrier and I'm from Seabrook, New Hampshire. Um, I am vehemently opposed to this. I think others have said it probably better than than I will say it. I just, I, you know, I, I really implore the commissioners to look inside, look in your conscience and think about. Like what, what did we all learn in school about what it is to be an American and what rights do we have? And the right to due process, the way we always, like until, honestly, until six months ago. We always thought our country worked and all of a sudden it doesn't work that way anymore. And do we wanna be part of that? Taking people off the streets with masked agents, no due process. And somebody else said it, and I think we've seen this at P's Air Force Base, where people are, you know, they're coming through our area. And they're being put on planes and shipped to god knows where. And they're, they're, they're trying to hand out their phone numbers to some of the observers. Cause they, their families don't know where they're going and they're not gonna be able to contact us the only way. Do we really want that in our county? I don't. And I don't want anything to do with it. And, and I would be, I, I think there are a lot of people in Rockingham County that really do. Thank you.
Um, my name is Maura Say, I'm from Exeter. Um, I wanna thank the commissioners for agreeing to a public hearing for this issue. I think, as you can clearly see, there are a lot of us here who are deeply concerned. And for many more would have wished to come here if they had um more notice and um more understanding that this was a possibility. I will echo the concerns that so many have shared about the lack of due process that is being offered. To these people who are being detained. ICE agents are grabbing people off the street away from their communities, from their jobs, from their homes. They are not being offered the rights that they have under our constitution. And our constitution does not only protect US citizens, it protects every single person in this country. Therefore, nobody should be torn away from their family, from their job, from their community. Without a proper reason, without being offered an opportunity to state their case in courts. In courts, we see people who are here legally. We see people who are US citizens. And we see people who are here illegally and who cares? They're being stripped of their rights. Being here in this country illegally is a misdemeanor. It's paperwork. And we have a, a, an absolute obligation to speak up for the human rights. Of every single human being in this country. I don't care if they're here illegally. And I am furious that. We are considering taking, as was so aptly stated, blood money from this illegal operation. To support a budget shortfall that was caused by a lack of leadership at the state level? Shane, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for listening. And I hope that you will consider this. Based on the feedback from your constituents.
Stephanie Marshall from Exeter. I'm glad to be back in this building for over 10 years. I supported the employees of the county through your employee assistance program. So I have known people and the work that you do here, and the challenges of being a county employee, and all the things, the challenges that are put on you, and what really good work you do. And just sitting through this meeting, there's a lot of details, and there's a lot of challenges. And I really appreciate all the things you have done. And I have been very proud of what Rockingham County, as the county government, has stood for. I am not proud of this being considered. I am not proud of it even coming to the forefront as a possibility in the name of money. It is blood money, it would be blood money. Also, with just echoing the due process, I come from this, my mother-in-law is a survivor of Nazi Germany. She grew up as a Lutheran during World War II. She is 106 and remembers and can speak about it. And what she knows and what she sees and what she experienced is that what's happening in the United States now is very unparalleled with what happened in Germany. And what she will talk about very little is the importance of resisting and what happens when people are complicit. She made it through until 1944 with her family being Lutheran and being there. And then someone mentioned that her father was Jewish, who had died 10 years before, and her brothers went to labor camps, and she was forced to flee and go hide in the country. They all survived, they came to the United States, and that's why we know it. But when I hear that, and then I hear what's happening and see what's happening here, it is a moral issue, it is a legal issue, and I can't stomach that Rockingham County is thinking of being complicit through this. And I think we should use those words of complicity. Thank you.
I'm mostly going to pass because everyone has spoken so well.
Judy, your name.
Judy Lambfer from Exeter. I think that this whole idea of capturing people on the street created tremendous fear among all of us. I wonder if I'm driving down the road and making a mistake that someone is going to come after me, not just the police. There is just so many possibilities that we all face in just knowing that out there, it's like the boogeyman. Now, they dress so awfully, and I just think about the children, the spirit must be, because we are adults, so.
Hi, thanks for having this public hearing. My name is Bob Moore, I'm from East Kingston. I lived here many years, originally from Pennsylvania, moved back here in the 80s. I've been here since then. I know our constitution, as mentioned earlier, guarantees the right to due process. Right to due process, whether you're a US citizen or you're not a US citizen. As long as you're a person in this country, you have a right to due process. As mentioned also, ICE authorities are detaining and deporting immigrants, or those that they claim are non-citizens without due process, which is, I consider an illegal act. It's unlawful if you're not following the constitution. So I'm dumbfounded, I don't understand why Rockingham County would support something that is unlawful. That is a puzzle to me, and I think it's, to me, it seems like a no-brainer not to support something like this if you put a believer in the US Constitution, which I am, which I think everyone here has to agree that we have rights. We need to abide by those rights and not to skirt those rights for some other reason, which is a rationalization at best, which is immoral on the surface and in my heart is wrong. So I leave it at that, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Hunter. I am a faith leader at South Church in Portsmouth, and I live in Portsmouth as well. I'm here speaking on my own behalf, but I am informed by our entire faith community who are horrified by the lawlessness and the amoral immigration crackdown that we're witnessing. For me, this is a moral issue. I believe in the inherent worth and dignity of all people. And I believe that migration is a fundamental human right, especially as we face a climate crisis that will continue to make parts of our planet uninhabitable. As a country who is responsible for much of the climate destruction that's happened to our planet, I think we have an excessive responsibility to offer home and shelter to the people who are being drawn out of their own homes because it is no longer safe. Further, our constitution enshrines rights that are being denied to our neighbors, as has been established by many of the comments in the room today. Locking up people without due process is simply illegal. That should be the end of the conversation. I understand for two of our board members that this is an economic issue. So rather than speaking to the morality that I feel should be centered here, to your responsibility to center human rights as public service workers, I will speak to the economics. Our country has been negligent in addressing a broken immigration system for more than a decade. Eight major pushes for bipartisan immigration reform have failed. Beginning in 2013, when the Senate passed a bipartisan bill that would have changed the course of this tragic story tremendously, the House Republicans refused at that time to take up the bill. There were six subsequent attempts that I could go into detail about, each of which were blocked by Republican-dominated parties in the House or in the Senate. But I'll move ahead to the last one before this current administration came into office. In 2024, Senate Republicans abandoned bipartisan immigration and border security bills because Donald Trump wanted to run on a platform of a broken border. They abdicated their responsibility to take care of people and create a legal system for immigration that would work in order to have an issue that they could divide people around. And I see that in our community. I see us being divided, when I also see people who are noble, who care about the citizens that live here, who are doing work to try and build up a town and a community, and that divisiveness is on purpose. Which brings me to the money. Immigration, immigrants in our country have been used as scapegoats for politicians because of privatized prisons. Because immigration has become the new way for giant conglomerate corporations to make massive amounts of money off of taxpayer dollars. Included in that is CoreCivic and the GEO Group, who have been raking in billions of dollars since before this administration for the past 10 years. And that industry is booming. They expect to increase profits in the next year or two by at least another billion dollars of taxpayer money that is not going to towns, it's not going to communities, it's going in the pocket of conglomerate CEOs. And they are paying our politicians to continue this, so that they can continue to take our money. Instead of us paying for our streets, instead of us finding ways to address the dire need for daycare, instead of us funding our school systems adequately, instead of us addressing the mental health crisis that we are experiencing as a country, instead of us working toward addressing climate change, we are pouring our money into the pockets of CEOs who are building concentration camps. And when they run out of immigrants to put there, they will find another group of people. I have seen them politicize trans people. It is less than one tenth, of 1% of the population of our state. And yet, how much time are we spending talking about it? Is it because they don't want us talking about the money? This is about the money. And I understand $6 million is not a small amount of money for this county. However, it is a tiny drop in the bucket for the people whose agenda is to continue to dehumanize human beings in order to profit off of them. And that is what's happening. Immigrants in our community are good for our local economy. They pay taxes, they fill essential jobs that are hard to staff, they work incredibly hard, and they spend their money in our communities just like the rest of us. They are our neighbors, they are children in our schools, and they are, right now, being sold off for $1.65, $165 a day in incarceration fees, which then pulls away from our local economy in drastic ways. I ask you, for all reasons, including economic, that you choose not to take this step and this measure. Thank you.
We're going to move on to people in Zoom. Leila, in terms of practically, do you want to just try to go through the list and unmute one at a time?
We'll start with 6:00.
We're just trying to figure out the technicalities because we have everyone muted in Zoom until, so.
They have to unmute on their end, Kate?
Yeah, yes, they'll have to unmute on your end, and then we can unmute our end as well. Do you need?
Up there.
I think you need to release, oh, there's one person, that's it.
Right. Cathy O. Cathy O.
Okay.
You have the floor.
All right. My name's Catherine Elkaizen. I've been a resident of Portsmouth for more than 35 years. I'm speaking in opposition to the potential contract for the Rockingham County Jail to include ICE detainees. I want our facilities to be used for current criminal issues, not for civil violations or the kinds of things that are happening with the ICE detainees. I do not want Rockingham County beholden to federal government through a contract. And I'm very concerned about the current situation with ICE. The quotas, the many new hires, that basic database and attention to details are getting left behind. Individuals are swept up that do have legal standing, concerns about due process that everyone has mentioned. And also the huge disruption to families, businesses, schools, and neighborhoods. And personally, I am fearful for residents of my county, for friends, for neighbors, for family members who have darker skin than I or speak with accents. Do they need to start carrying proof of citizenship or legal standing just as they go through their days? As elected commissioners, it's your job to earn the trust of the citizens through thoughtful and open-minded debate. And if a contract should be offered, I would hope to hear a transparent debate about how this would in fact improve the lives of our residents. Thank you for your attention and for all the work that you do.
There's some extra seats for everybody who wants to stand in. Feel free, anyone standing who wants to come and grab a seat or please. Next, we have.
Susan Mayer.
Susan Mayer. You have to unmute as well.
Star six.
I'm not sure that's the name.
Can I speak?
We've called Susan Meyer, so. Susan, if you'd like to speak, it's star six to unmute on an iPhone.
Oh, that's helpful.
I know.
She may be right outside as well, I was wondering if she should just come in. I believe she must be.
Okay. Well, we'll wait, Susan, if you want to come into the building to speak, you can. Otherwise, we'll move on and come back to you.
Okay. Joey Jordan.
Thank you, my name is Joe Jordan. I'm formerly of Hampton and now of Dover. So if you would be so kind as to let a Stratford County neighbor speak very briefly, I promise. The perspective from here, ICE money is not free money, it's our tax dollars. We're all paying federal taxes, and that's where that's coming from. Jails have a purpose and a process, and we really recommend that you follow the guidance on both. I do appreciate all of the work that this entire team is doing, and I appreciate that you are considering this seriously. And I also want to give you a quick scenario of a 17-year-old who was picked up after a traffic stop and was transferred through New Hampshire, hundreds of miles from home and family, while trying to obtain an attorney. These are not, these are not violent criminals, so many of them that are being taken. And that's why I'm really pushing to make certain that you look at the processes that are being followed and make certain that these are the people that we actually want to be locking up. And I also want to point out that there was, tensions are growing about this entire issue, and there was that violence in Dallas. And we do not want to see that sort of a thing here in New Hampshire. And that's all I'm going to do, because thank you very much for your time.
Judith, iPad.
Come back to that one?
Okay.
Jimmy Pesto.
Hi, I'm a resident of Rockingham County. One thing I want to talk about today is just that the statistics in Stratford County Jail for ICE detainees shows extremely high rates of solitary confinement, far higher than any other facility in New England, and way above the national average. I understand why it would be that high, because when you have surplus jail space, where is it? It's in solitary confinement, in other places, other cells that are not used for the general population. The idea of putting innocent people into solitary confinement is extremely disturbing. If you've ever been in, I just want people to think about what it feels like to be in solitary confinement. Within a few minutes, your mental health starts to completely fall apart. Most people that get put into solitary confinement, they ask for medical attention. And rather than receive attention, they get put into a cell where no one can hear them cry for help. You have walls that are made of concrete. You could easily get hurt from a fall, from a stroke of any kind. The lights never turn off. You sleep in full brightness all night long. Essentially, you don't fall asleep. It is designed to torture your soul. The idea that we're going to put people who may or may not have been convicted of crimes, whose immigration status, I don't know, it doesn't agree with whoever's in charge. If the whole idea here is we're trying to sort of, if this is a law enforcement policy, and we're trying to maintain some sort of like moral character or to make sure that our citizens are behaved, the idea of putting people in jail who are innocent, it just doesn't align with those values. I don't understand why we would contribute mental harm, long-lasting mental harm. When you go into jail, it's not like you sleep easily when you leave. When you go into jail, it's not like you sleep easily when you leave. You have, you have nightmares for literally your whole life. You have PTSD. And especially in solitary confinement, those, those experiences are far higher than for the general prison population. Now, I assume that children will also be in these solitary confinement cells. If that's where the extra space is, it's going to everyone. It's going to men. It's going to women. It's going to children. Why would we do this to people? I really don't know. And for $6 million, it's, it's really not a lot of money. If you need the money, I'm sure people will be happy to send a check to the county. And for that matter, what do we get from the extra $6 million? Is it, what types of services are going to be enhanced in Rockingham County? We don't know. Thank you for your time.
NR.
Hi there. My name is Nicole Ray. Can you hear me okay? From Portsmouth.
Yep.
Thank you for having this hearing. I echo others in opposition to this. And I also believe that there should be another public hearing with more notice and more widespread communication about it. Thank you for all who were able to be there in the room today. I think that you've all made really strong points and I don't have much else to offer. Other than that, I have had some experience in helping a refugee family settle here. And I know that people immigrate, immigrate here for a variety of different reasons. But I can say that that experience really showed me that people, people come here for their families. They come here for safety. And it is a very challenging process to assimilate here, to get your kids and old into school, to line up healthcare, to find rides. And these people, they just, they just want to work. They just want to be in a safe place. And without due process, they're not criminals. And we, we all know that, that ICE is, they're, they're detaining people who, who are not criminals. So I don't believe that we in our community should be a part of basically incarcerating somebody who's not a criminal. Who just, they want their due process and they, and they're just here again for what we, what we say we offer, right? As the United States, we're supposed to be welcoming. So yeah, I, that's, that's what I have to say. And again, thank you for all who could speak more to the economics of the issue. Thank you.
Hello, other than stating that I agree with everyone who spoke before me, I don't need to speak. Thank you.
Where are you from, Sarah?
Oh, I'm from Portsmouth.
Okay, David Holt.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Oh, sorry about that. This is David Holt. I'm actually from Summersworth, New Hampshire. I am here on behalf of Occupy New Hampshire Seacoast, which is all over Stratford County, Rockingham County and up into Maine as well. I wanted to just again touch on the economic importance of it. These people are the essential workers of our community and it's going to negatively affect the economy in all of New Hampshire. If we take the people that are making, farming our, for our food, shelving our stores, doing all of the work, taking care of our elderly, taking care of our children. There's going to be a huge economic effect, not to mention the moral problems that there are with it. Plus, everything here is based on false information. Immigrants are one-third less likely to commit crimes than are US citizens. They are more likely to have a doctorate degree and on and on. So again, I would strongly recommend that you do not sign on to this agreement. Thank you. People clap.
Yeah. Anon seven. Anon seven, do you wish to speak? So we have, who's left, Susan Mayer's iPhone, 603, and Anon seven. I think those are the only ones.
Raise their hand in Zoom in order to indicate that they'd like to speak. If that's, if anybody has not gotten an opportunity to speak, they would like to.
And this woman came in from outside.
Susan's saying, looks like no. So I do not want to speak.
Okay, I think that probably concludes. I don't think, well, yeah, we do have to speak. Or you don't have to. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I will say only that my name is Terry Ellen Carter. I live in Stratford County. But I feel like even Stratford County should have a voice in this because it's all our area. Yay to everybody. This is not the best way to do anything. Thank you all who spoke.
Okay, that is last call for public comment. I don't think there's anyone else here. We appreciate everybody coming to speak out, come public comment every week. And obviously we took a vote today to have a public hearing on this issue if the contract moves back. So you know, we are, you know, our job is to, to answer to our constituents. So we look forward to more people attending that public hearing.
When will the recording be available, Kate? Do you know?
The recording of this meeting, it usually gets uploaded fairly quickly, but probably.
That's four o'clock.
Yeah.
Four o'clock today.
Yeah.
They are amazing, Leila. With that, it's now the time for us to enter into non-public session. So.
Well, thank you for having us. Thank you so much.
I move to enter into non-public session for some of the 91 to 123 section two regarding personal matters.
Commissioner, I know, but I asked you for your contact. I'm just going to seek this online. I have hers and I would love to.
Good, we are, it's now good afternoon. We are out of non-public session. We had seven non-public sessions and I will proceed with motions on each. All these minutes will be sealed indefinitely because we don't have a, either a time. It is either in relation to a person or we don't have a proposed action with no definite timeline. So that's the basis to seal indefinitely. With respect to the basis for sealing, I move to seal item number one because it is in reference to HIPAA. Item number two and three, because it could render a proposed action ineffective. Item number four, because it relates to, it could adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. Item number five, because it could render a proposed action ineffective. Item number six, because it could adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. And item number seven pertains to the preparation or carrying out of actions regarding terrorism.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, all accurate.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And we have one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. In favor?
All in favor.
Aye. Have a good afternoon, everybody, and we'll see you next week.